And, thank you, Donna. And now invite everybody to remain standing for the opening karakia. Just got our members, we've got just councillor Pannett on line at the moment, I think. Line is good, I think. Right, okay. Fakata katahao kiti uru. Fakata katahao kiti tonga. Kia ma kina kina ki'uta. Kia ma kina kina tikai. He i'aka ana te atakura. He teo, he huka, he hauhui, tihae māori ora. Thank you all. So, welcome everyone to the council meeting today. As you know, it's livestreamed, as we always do, in the interests of open democracy. Please let me or Democracy Services know if you intend to leave the meeting. In the event that we're going that long, there will be no German around 10.30 and lunch at 12.30, but I'm hoping that we'll be well through by that time. I think people are keen that we have our meetings efficiently and effectively, and certainly feedback that I've been given about the way we do our business. Are there any apologies? Let's see, we've got two online. Do the quick head count. Yeah, we're all here, right, okay. So we don't have any apologies. I have no announcements. Are there any conflict of interest declarations? I see none, none from the two councils on line? No, okay. Confirmation of the minutes. I move that the council approves the minutes of the council meeting of the 21st of July, which has been circulated, taken as read. That will be seconded by councillor Sparrow. Any debate that isn't? Okay, if you can all vote in the usual way, please. Well done. And we've got the votes from two online. They're voting just by putting their hand up, aren't they? They're going yes, yes, no. Right, so you've got those? Yep, cool, thank you. Okay, thank you. There are no items not on the agenda. There is no public participation that's been requested, so there is none. And that takes us straight to general business. So we're going to start with item 2.1, local authority election considerations. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So this report on the local authority election considerations asks council to consider and make decisions on the representation arrangements and matters covered under the Local Electoral Act 2001. Namely, when we're going to have the next election, what sort of types of wards and other representation we're going to have, and the order of the names on voting papers and other sorts of things. So currently, we have five wards, 14 councillors and a mayor elected at large in the city. And we use STV for all of those elections. The recommendations in this report, it's a fairly straightforward report. The recommendations in this report recommend that we confirm STV continue to be used for our elections, but does it, that we do advertise the right of electors to call for a poll to challenge that if they wish. Think it takes 5% of our electors to demand a poll before we have one. We are asked to agree the representation review be undertaken in 2025 rather than 2022. And I think that does make sense, given that, you know, they're expensive things to conduct. And if you're going to do one, you actually want to do it properly and make sure you've got enough time for it. But we're asked to agree that, and we're asked to agree that candidates' names be listed, continue to be listed in random order. We do have the right of investigating when we do our, when we do our review, or any time really, I suppose, but it's best combined with a review because it's a big process, whether we want to have Maori wards. And we have enough Maori population to have a ward, if that is the desire of both our Iwi and our communities. So, at the moment, my understanding is Iwi, our Wellington Iwi, have not indicated a strong desire for this. So I think it's a fairly straightforward paper, but I anticipate there will be quite a bit of discussion. My own personal preference is to keep it as simple as possible, to be honest, because we have so much else that's happening in our city that needs our attention. But I await the debate. I move.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, I'm going to second. I've always taken a great interest in training or reviews. In fact, there were many, many years where the council said we need to have 21 members or some number like that. And there were two of us who said, we think that they've got that wrong. And ultimately, the local government electoral commission said, yes, we agree. And we then ended up with the number of councils that we've got. And I'm not sure that anybody will want to, to go back. This paper, what it's about, and I think there are some people who might want to broaden the discussion, but this paper is quite clear, the purpose of the paper is to, to make decisions on the matters at the beginning there, which is to review the electoral system. So do we go with STV or do we go with FPP? And I think we're pretty well attuned to STV these days. And I think we would probably like it if all elections were covered under STV, so that removed that issue of confusion. And then I think the other one is the issue of, of random order of names, which again, I think we're all pretty well attuned to. There was a time, yeah, especially councillor Young. There was, but there was a time when, when being councillor Young would have been a massive disadvantage because in fact, there were councils going way back where there were, there were a high preponderance of Bs in the, in the council. And there was a suggestion that in fact, those who were pre at the top, people got bored by the time they got halfway down and they just ticked the ones at the top. So those who were further down the alphabet were disadvantaged. So clearly, it makes sense, it's a fairer way of doing that. So the, the key decision that we've got to make is, do we do, do we have a review of our, our, our boundaries and our, our process for the coming election, either 2022 one or for the 2025 one? Now, we don't have to do it this time round, but we can choose to do it this time round. And the, as the paper records, the, the last council actually said that they thought that it would be quite a good idea if we had a look at it this time. And the reason for that was that there was, the, the things we need to consider in terms of boundaries are things about community of interest. But the other one, the other very, very important one is that every vote essentially counts the same. And so that means you don't have some areas which are, you know, have 20,000 people per councillor and other areas that have 10,000 people per councillor. So the, the Act says there's a plus or minus 10% rule. And in fact, two of our wards are outside of that plus or minus 10%, or they were the last time we looked, which is the eastern and southern ward. So logically, there would have been a piece of the southern ward which transferred into eastern to balance the numbers up. But because the, the community of interest was deemed to be more with the southern ward, that didn't happen, and the electoral commission said, look, we're okay with that. So that is, if we were going to do a review, that was one of the aspects that we would consider. I guess the question you've got to consider is, how important is that to do? And, and obviously, the advice from officers that we've got here is that, much as it might be attractive to do that, there are so many things which are challenging our city at the moment. And it is about making the boat go faster, it's about making the boat, keeping the boat afloat, actually, and keeping, you know, keeping people in employment, keeping businesses going. That's, that should be, I think, our, our key priority rather than officer resource going into this. The other point is around Maori representation. And the deputy mayor has raised the issue of Maori wards. That is something which we're entitled to consider. And I actually think the next time that there is a review, whether it's 2022 or whether it's 2025, that we should be considering that. I think that is a perfectly reasonable proposition. We have enough people who are defined as Maori in our community to, to warrant that. Just in talking to members of, some members of the Maori community, particularly having seen councillor Day's suggested amendment, one of the things that they have noted is the, the process that we go through, the process that we go through to actually establish a Maori ward makes it very, very difficult for that to happen because there tend to be a lot of people who vote against. Now, that, I think, is unfortunate. I think that the principle of one person, one vote is a really important one. And if there are enough people who think that they want to have, to be represented in that particular way, I think that is fine, and it should be a conversation which we have with our wider community. And I'd be happy to champion that conversation as part of what we do going forward. But the, just to finish off with, the, the report is quite tight about what it's about. And I guess that's, and that might be an issue. And I know, looking at councillor Day's, the amendment that she sent around, I, I do find that an issue with this. I know that there are other ways, there are other ways of, of dealing with that, and I'm sure that we can deal with it in those ways, and I will look forward to doing that. So happy to second, and is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor Day.
Seeing as you've already spoken to my amendment before I put it on the table. I did, I tried to follow the process. So I'm putting this amendment forward, and if, are you able to bring it up on the screen? So, tēnā koutou ka tua, tua tahikienga iwi mana finua, nei rātemahi maioha, kia mōnga, kia awa, kia tupuna, kia tamari ki mokapuna, kia koutou ka tua. I firstly want to acknowledge mana finua. As the mayor has said, that Maori play an important part in this city, and the process for mana finua and Maori to be at the table is not simple. Our tupuna have paved the way for us to be here today. And for mana finua here, they understand their role as kaiaiake. So I acknowledge their relationship, and, and having them around the table will value, will add value beyond which we can possibly articulate, or I can articulate in three minutes. Not only will it benefit Te Taiala, the environment, but also the social and cultural wellbeing of our communities and also our economy. We are making space for your voice as mana finua. It should have been here years ago, but we have a strong desire around this table now. We will focus forward and build and grow together, and we will honour tētērātia o waitangi. Secondly, I want to acknowledge Wellingtonians. This amendment comes on the back of tētou ihu, which was adopted a couple of years ago with unprecedented feedback and support. The number of people have said to me that they feel proud to live in a city, a capital city, which is embracing our indigenous culture and our Rio, has been so encouraging. And I anticipate that this will be the same. Conversations about representation are happening all around Aotearoa at the moment. In fact, we're seeing daily councils coming on board with talking about Maori ward and representation. And I feel that the tide is turning. Councils are finding that they agree on the need for Maori representation as we as a nation face a difficult past and look forward to a different future. Thirdly, I'd like to acknowledge council officers who have been working on this for their courageous conversations. I know that they have been working hard on this in the background, and our decision today shows that we support their mahi, we are with them. Councillors, we're privileged to be around this table, we are at this table. I take this position seriously and always mindful of those who aren't here. Please note that in this debate today, and in the decisions that are made around this, that there are many councils around Aotearoa who have addressed this years ago. Our neighbours in Loahut, in fact, have allowed for voting seats for mana finua. I respect that councillors may have different opinions, and I've heard some of those over the last few hours. And some of them have been expressed to me in a way that is, is not easy to take. So I just want to remind you and request that your comments are respectful. Badly placed comments can cause great harm and offence and be remembered in the years to come. How do you want to be remembered in history? So this amendment is really important because it helps us to take the step forward of putting mana finua in the place where they can be to, to see their desires for the future. I'd like to acknowledge the council of all for supporting me. And tērāpou tama team, as I said, Nikki, Renee and Anna, everything that you do, we appreciate. If we all knew how many requests they receive for support, we wouldn't believe that this is, that their work is possible. Kia kaha inga wahinitua, I appreciate you. So, yeah, I'm going to put it here. And I understand that the mayor has made some statements before this. But I stand by my amendment, and I think it's important that we bring it to the table.
Your worship, I'd like to call a point of order in regard to this amendment. This point of order is referred to standing order 26.5E, breach of standing order. Whilst well intentioned, this amendment, I fear, breaches the standing order that says that amendments must be relevant to the motion at hand. The motion at hand deals with matters relevant to the 2022 and 25 local body election to the Wellington City Council. The amendment provides for the constitution of subcommittees of the city council by unelected people, which can already take place. The, the motion, again, talks about Maori wards in the context of the, the legislation, the order of candidates' names, whether we use first past the post and so forth. Whereas the amendment is actually about subcommittees and the constitution of those subcommittees. The two are not related.
This sounds like debate, not just a point of order.
This is not an amendment of, this is not an amendment of anything that the motion says. It actually needs to be its own agenda item.
Thank you, councillor Rush. That was my view as well, and that's why I set out the, and I understand fully the intent behind this. But it is quite specific, and the purpose of the paper is set out very, very clearly. Were there a, a notice to put this item on the table as its own agenda item? I will be very sympathetic to that. But this is about the electoral arrangements, as you said, councillor Rush, for 2022 and 2025, and whether we do a review of those electoral arrangements. So I'm going to rule in your favour.
So I just request to speak again. It's a shame that people have decided to take this, and I, I'm standing with 16.7, I am tabling a paper. So I'm tabling a notice of motion which asks for the same thing that I was going to do. It's a shame that my colleagues have chosen to be disrespectful to a process which is still important. There is a connection, this is about representation, and it's really hard. You've acknowledged it's hard to do Maori ward.
You're in debate now.
I have the signatures, I'm going to hand it around, and I think some other people want to sign it as well, so. This needs to be on the table, and now it is.
Look, I would like to adjourn the meeting just for a moment. So we have a, so councillor, under standing order 16.7, you are sitting. Table a paper. Back to the substantive. Is there any further debate on substantive? I see none. Deputy Mayor, do you wish to write a reply?
I actually, I actually think, no. I mean.
Right. Councillor Pannett, councillor Calvert, could you vote, please? Good, thank you. Close the vote? It's unanimous, is it? It's unanimous. Thank you, councillors. Deputy Mayor, approval of the local governance statement.
So look, what happens, of course, is every triennium, we're actually legally, as part of our legislative requirements, we need to put our governance arrangements publicly on our website or otherwise have them available to the public. Of course, our, within six months of the election. Now, this year, that sort of coincided with a whole lot of drama around COVID and, and all sorts of things. But we did manage to put an assembled governance statement, which basically brings together a whole lot of other documents we'd agreed, but puts them all into one place and pulls them together. Again, it's about how we run the council, what our committees are, what our portfolio responsibilities are, what, what external committees we sit on, and other things too, like, you know, references the acts under which we work, and things like our code of conduct and other things are mentioned in there. We can amend this any time, but we really do have the responsibility right now of just making sure this has kind of been rubber stamped. That didn't happen because of COVID, that we were due to have this. We were due to have this paper come to us sometime in April. Covid got in the way and we had other things that were far more pressing at the time. So this is, I think, in some ways, just an exercise of making sure we've ticked the boxes around what we need to do with our formal documents. I don't think I have too much to say. There are a couple of... I'm happy to move it pro forma with some amendments which have been suggested by councillor Pennett. And I have also noticed there's a little typo around some of Rebecca's portfolio areas, which I'm sure we can amend and get fixed. I didn't notice any other things that were not correct, but if anyone else has that, you know, feel free to tell me and I'm sure we can make very minor amendments to little things if they are not 100% what they should be. So that's it from me. I don't know who's seconding. All right, thank you.
Sorry, try that again. If you can both vote, that's good, right. Well done, that's unanimous as well. Okay, that takes us now, the item on the road closure has been withdrawn, so which takes us to the annual report to the Alcohol Regulatory Authority. So councillor Fitzsimons.
Yes, doc, it's my pleasure to introduce the annual report to the Alcohol Regulatory Authority from the Wellington District Licensing Committee. I think this report is a statutory requirement. We do need to do these annually and it has quite a strict format about how it needs to be done, which our officers have worked with the authority to prepare. I just want to raise one point about it, which I think is a very important one, and that is that, as this report shows, when local communities do organise and get together and express their objection to alcohol, the sale of alcohol in their communities, the authority does take them seriously and they have had some success. So I think that's a very strong message to those communities and I want to congratulate those who were involved, particularly around the Kandala Bottle Store, but also people like Bernard O'Shaughnessy, who's taken a principled position for many, many years on these issues. And I think that this report acknowledges the value of the community having its say on these matters.
Thanks councillor Fitzsimons, seconding councillor Paul, do you want to second? Cool, okay, does anybody wish to speak? Do you wish to speak? And does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Wolf.
I wasn't going to speak, your worship, but I am going to because councillor Fitzsimons highlighted the bottle O situation in Kandala. To go through that process was really, really cumbersome. It was expensive. The community are still paying off a debt in regards to legal fees. I have approached the minister regarding this and I think that the licensing situation and how it deals with concerns and issues is very adversarial and very confrontational. And it's something that we should take into account in the future. It's just, I'm just noting that because it has a huge cost, not just on the community, but also on the officers and also on the people who are actually applying for licences. So yeah, I just thought I'd highlight that.
Anyone else? Look, I will say a couple of things. So councillor Fitzsimons, thank you for the introduction. I'll go to councillor Conde. I've got to just follow on from what councillor Wolf was saying. I think there are a lot of things which are wrong with the whole alcohol, liquor, the sale and supply of alcohol act. And they have been, in fact, local government New Zealand has taken those to the minister and said, look, we think you need to have a look at it. Because there are some very, at times, very arbitrary outcomes. The process is very expensive and it's expensive sometimes for those who are relatively low risk and those who are relatively high risk. Obviously, we've been having to go through a process of looking at how we charge fees for applying for alcohol licences. The other thing to say is that, in theory, behind the legislation was that local communities would be able to develop their own local liquor policies. But the reality is that the way in which that goes is, it has about as much chance of flying as, we've mentioned Maori wards recently, it has even less chance of flying with those because you have conflicting interests which tend to fight against each other. And I think I am... I don't know councillor Pennett, did you ever get to sit on a liquor hearing? But no, I sat on a few and it's quite clear that some of them are very lengthy, expensive processes for the people participating. Sometimes you can have the situation where for an applicant, for example, one person can say, I've got a problem with that. And even if that one person is barely affected at all, it can have a massive financial impact on the applicant. And on the other hand, you've just highlighted the issue with Kandala where an applicant goes in and obviously it causes a major issue for a wider community. So there are some significant issues that I think are of concern. And the last point I was going to make is that there are a number of pieces of legislation where I think government, basically, you look at it and you really have this feeling of the government saying, we don't trust local government. And they straightjacket local government in terms of making sensible and logical decisions. And the one I keep raising, and I'm going to do it again because I don't think I've done it with this, in this triennium, is a situation where we had an applicant, the law says that to be able to get a licence, your largest item of turnover has got to be grocery items, it's got to be a grocery store. And this poor applicant, their largest item by a fraction was snapper. They didn't make a lot of money out of snapper, of course, but their largest item was snapper. And because the law is written the way the law is written, we had no choice other than to say, you cannot get a liquor licence or you've got to stop selling snapper. Now, I ask you whether that actually assists in managing alcohol and I think the answer is it doesn't. So there are a number of challenges with the act, so I'm really just following up what councillor Wolf said. It is in need of some serious attention.
Councillor Calvert, yeah. So just due to the concerns that have been raised by a number of the speakers, I was going to move an amendment that concerns about the expense and expertise needed for communities to be meaningfully involved in this process are included in the report. The annual report does ask for us to provide feedback on how well the system is working and obviously councillors have some concerns and feedback about that. This amendment is going to be seconded by councillor Foon and has officer support. I'll pass the wording up to you, Donna, right now.
You're happy with that? Yep, okay. People happy to, which I'll just read it out. So it's that... You are a doctor, so... The concerns about the expense and expertise needed for communities to be meaningfully process are included in the report. People happy with that? People happy to accept that? Cool, okay, so we'll accept that. Okay, thank you. Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. Look, as somebody that was closely involved in the Kandala Bottle O application, I just want to clarify a couple of things as well, which I don't think the report quite clearly reflected the reasons why it was turned down by the licensing authority. And one of those was the character of the applicant was brought into question and the licensing authority ruled on that. So it wasn't just about the amenity value. But it did cost the community tens of thousands of dollars to launch this objection and many unpaid volunteer hours by various parts of the community. The one good thing that will come out of it is it will provide some very useful case law for other communities that they don't have to go through quite the same thing because there's that case law now, which in itself has set a precedent. But I just want to call out, you know, the actual contribution by the people in the community, but also the lack of contribution by our own council because part of the amenity aspects was because this bottle O was going to be just a few metres from our own public hall that council owns and has for community use, right across the road from the Kandala Library and also the plonker rooms that we provide and also a small community children's park. So this is the problem when the council acts itself as judge, jury and executioner. So there was no, there was no one else in the council to come forward and say, hey, you know, this is going to impact on our own facilities. So I think that's a really important thing for our council to consider, that we need to think about, you know, our own investments in these areas. And so, and that was never factored in. And certainly we had no support from the council on this, even though they had community buildings just a few metres away. And just bearing in mind, the other aspect of this is, the village is a small area, but we also have several restaurants, a local pub and a supermarket. So we're quite well, the community is able easily to get alcohol and this was not a requirement. And I just also want to point out that the landlord of these buildings also need to have a duty of care to the communities that they are in. And this particular landlord is the Johnsonville Community Trust. So I would have expected them to have had more thought and care into what they put into their buildings and ensure that they are a good community player. So yeah, that was all I needed to say on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, just in time. Anybody else? Councillor Fitzsimons, write a reply.
Yeah, look, just very briefly, I just want to thank councillor Conde for that amendment because the statutory provision around annual reports does actually allow us to provide some insight into how we think the law is working or not working. And have talked to officers about perhaps for next year, doing quite a detailed assessment of the sorts of things that councillor Wolf and councillor Calvert have, and yourself, your worship, have raised so that we can sort of comprehensively send a message to government about the areas of law reform that we would like to see. But that's a bigger piece of work and in the meantime, I think it's very sensible to note our concerns around the expertise and expense required. So thank you.
Thank you councillor, we'll vote now please. Councillor, are we having a technical problem? Thank you, that's unanimous. Right, report 3.1, councillor Sparrow.
Right, the regs committee recommends that council accepts the recommendations outlined in this paper. in this paper. They are to do with the road stopping and sale of land at two and four Rangirarua of Kaifarafora. So we're simply giving the go ahead to council officers to proceed to the next step in the sale process. I move.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Conde. Thank you. Do you wish to speak?
Very briefly, just to say that this was an area where they, they want to add some land to their driveway after they had some damage to a retaining wall during the Kaikauara earthquake. And when officers started looking into that, we discovered that there was a small patch of land here that doesn't appear to actually have an owner. We've got some estate land, they, that they haven't tracked the owner since 1904. So there's been a court process that needs to go through to be able to move this whole thing along. So thanks so much to the officers who have done all the work in, in that investigation and ancestry to try and find, see if we can find who this, this little parcel of land belongs to.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? No. Councillor Sparrow, do you, I don't imagine you need to write a reply to that? No. Okay, we'll, we'll vote, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, report 3.2, gifting of the name Paikaka. Councillor Day.
Well, I don't think I need to say too much to this because we had a really lovely debate about it at committee and I just want to continue to endorse and celebrate Sareo Maori and I think it's a beautiful name. And we've had wonderful feedback from the community, so I'm happy to put this.
And I will second. I don't need to say any more. Anybody else wish to speak? No? Okay, we'll put the vote. Cool. Thank you. Parking policy. Councillor Conde.
Thanks, everyone. So this is bringing two, two recommendations to council from, from a meeting that we had on the, the parking policy, that that should be adopted and the dangerous and insanitary buildings policy report back, which councillor Pennett so ably led through committee. Again, I don't think that we need to say very much except to thank all the staff and councillors and community participants who have been working on the parking policy, not just in the last eight months to get it to this point, but in the many years leading up to this, to get this piece of work across the line. It's a really important cornerstone for our city to move forward in some of our transport objectives around Let's Get Wellington Moving and the step change that we want to see there. And this is a really important piece of groundwork for that. So thank you, everyone, for your contributions.
Thanks. Councillor Frey, do you want to, your deputy mayor, do you want to second that? Do you wish to say anything?
I do, I do want to say something because it has been said before, but really this is a huge piece of work and really, as councillor Conde said, it's a real foundation, foundational document for the sort of transformation we want to see in our city. I can't overestimate the care that's been taken to get this right and I think it's a piece of work we can all be extremely proud of.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Your worship, can we take them separately, A and B separately?
No, we aren't. Sorry, this is just the parking policy, to be clear.
All right, well, I mean, I, I made my comments.
Do you wish to stand?
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree that it's a great piece of work. It's very complicated. The one piece that I felt was missing was the prospect of maybe needing more car parking, particularly in residential areas as the city grows. So I'm disappointed that hasn't gone in as a consequence. I think it's actually slightly flawed, only slightly, but, but there you go.
Thanks councillor. I will say just a few words. What I was going to say, I was tempted to stand and just say thank you. So I just wanted to place on, on record my thanks to councillor Conde for her leadership in this role and also to particularly Helen Bolton for the fantastic work that she's done, but also all the other officers who've worked very, very hard because this is a very important foundational piece of work, as you said, that will set us in a good, a good position for the delivery of Let's Get Wellington Moving. And there, you know, I've certainly had feedback from officers at times saying, we need this piece of work because that, that allows us to start doing that, thinking about the movement of, of vehicles and the movement of people on, you know, foot, bike, public transport, motor vehicle through our streets and how that interfaces with parking. Councillor Rush, what, what you might be comforted in, in that is that as we do that kind of work, there is the option therefore, and it's in the policy, to say, well, look, there are places where parking may need to go on the street and because of the nature of that place, that maybe we need to look at off-street parking. That is provided for in the, in the policy. And I know that there'll be some parts of our city where that, that is probably going to be quite an important issue as we go forward with some of our aspirations to get more people moving, using fewer vehicles than would be the case if we did not make these changes. Almost unanimous. Okay. Councillor Pennett. Dangerous and insanitary buildings.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. Kia ora kato. Look, I don't need to speak much, but just to say thank you again to officers for being so responsive about making changes to the policy around consultation with Manu Finoa and Heritage New Zealand. Again, I recognise the work of councillor Fitzsimons around looking at the wider issues around insanitary buildings and look forward to working with her on some more solutions along with other colleagues. And also just to acknowledge, this is a difficult space to work in. I'm obviously grieving slightly over the fire at 128 Able Smith Street last night. And obviously we've got the issue of the Tip Top Building and there are a few others too that we might have some concerns with. Buildings are difficult to maintain. There's no easy answer with some of these things. And certainly through the district plan, we want to make sure also that we don't, buildings are to be demolished, that we don't leave large empty sites, which is not a good thing for the city. Thanks again to the officers. Appreciate all the work.
Thanks councillor Pennett. Seconded by, who wants to second? Thank you councillor Rush. Do you wish to speak?
No, thanks, just to say thanks to the officers.
Anyone else wish to speak? No, thank you. Right, we will vote. It is unanimous. Right, that takes us to the motion to exclude the public for the last two items. So I'm going to move that subject to, we've got 4.1, it's subject 7.2A, the withholding of the information is necessary to protect the privacy of natural persons. I don't think any of them are deceased. And also that the withholding of information is necessary to prevent the disclosure or use of official information for improper gain or improper advantage. But I'm also moving, you will see, and this is because of the discussions we've had, councillor Pennett particularly, that you've raised, the timeframe for release of the information. In one of the report, item 4.1, you will see that that is to be February 2021 or once all the conditions of sale and agreement have been met, whichever is the sooner. And item 4.2 will be immediate after the meeting. It's just in case there's anything that's raised in the meeting which causes any problem with that particular thing. And I did ask when, when this was put in front of me, I did ask whether the, the other party was happy with that, to be asked whether they were happy with that and they are. So I'm advised and so we are happy to do that after the meeting. So I am moving, a seconded by deputy mayor. Okay. Is there any debate? No, we'll put that thing. Thank you. Councillor Fitzsimons. Thank you. That's also unanimous. Right. Councillor O'Neill. Oh, sorry. Hold on, hold my horses. We'll get all the, get all the, the technology turned off. Sorry councillor O'Neill. We're just a little bit too quickly.